Commission Construction. Yes, sir.
Good afternoon Chairman and Commissioners. Rocky and I were having a discussion. This is really a DOT bid process and it got stuck on the SPOS part of it. So if it'll be okay, and I don't think Rocky will object, I'll be happy to talk to you about it. Henry County DOT has a project to improve various county roads using the method of cement stabilized base reclaiming based construction. This process uses utilizes existing roadway materials and mixed with Portland cement to form the roadway base. The county will then apply the finished top of asphalt. This process is obviously more cost effective and environmentally friendly than rebuilding the existing roadway with new more costly materials. Seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department per bid number 16-39 and posted on January 20th, 2016 for a project to improve various county roads using the method of cement stabilized base reclamation construction. There were three sealed bids that were received and reviewed. Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction Incorporated provided a low bid of $853,870. There are 21 roads slated for the cement stabilized base reclamation, of which 16 roads are funded through the local maintenance improvement grant better known as AL-MIG, and five roads are funded through SPOS 4 funds. The total of the AL-MIG for 16 roads is $707,143.92. Then from SPOS 4 funds you have $59,547.36 for one road in District 1, and $87,178.72 for four roads in District 4. Staff recommends the approval of the award of bid 16-39 for this process to the overall low bidder of Atlanta Paving and Concrete Construction in the amount of $853,870.
Anybody have any questions or comment? If not, somebody move the approved resolution. Have a motion District 4.
Second.
Second District 1, any further discussion? In favor raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution awarding a bid for triple surface treatment for county roads. Rocky, good evening.
Good afternoon Chairman and Board Members. SPOS 4 was approved by voters in November 2013. Surface treatment are approved District 1 and District 3 SPOS 4 projects. Seal bids were solicited through the Purchasing Department for triple surface treatment for approximately nine miles of county roads located in District 1 and District 3. Bid number 16-42. The list for District 1 triple surface treatments is as follow. Davis Lake Road from Annapayment to Harris Drive. Ellis Town Road from Annapayment to Muckuson Gap Road. Luella Road from Hampton Locust Grove Road to Stairway 155. Luella Road from Annapayment to Frog Road. Pixville from Sunset Drive to Frog Road. Tresal Road from Cul-de-sac to Stairway 155. And Wims Road from Hunter to Hampton Locust Grove Road. The list for District 3 triple surface treatment is as follow. Austin Road from Stairway 81 to Marinatha Road. And Marinatha Road from Austin Road to Snapping Shoals Road. One sealed bid was received and reviewed. The one bid is for $487,227.20 from Middle Georgia Paving, Inc.
Question to comment? We have a question District 1. Which road is it that the Water Authority owns part of at the very end of that we'll stop there at the line?
We're gonna stop, that would be Hunter, that would be Wims Road. Wims turns into Hunter and Hunter goes into the water reservoir.
So we have a discussion with the Water Authority?
Not to do anything on Hunter. We're just...
No, I'm talking about on Wims.
No, sir.
Should we have a conversation with them maybe about getting it all finished?
I'm not aware of any other communications before with the water on that project for that road. I don't know if they did previously with DOT. I know DOT at one time they were looking into it as well.
Okay, alright, thanks. Any other questions or comment? If not, we have a motion. Have a motion. Have a second from District 3. Any further discussion? In favor raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Out of courtesy, I've actually got an appointment up in Gwinnett County. And I'm gonna have to leave because we ran a little long today. But could we go ahead and do this a little out of order and go to the county manager's comments? Because I knew there was a stormwater situation that he was going to address.
Do you have anything other than that in county management?
I do. I'm gonna address the Eagle Brook's projects.
Okay, but I mean, do you have anything other than that?
Yes, sir, I do.
Okay. Does anybody object if we move down and hear the Eagle Brook's? The county manager's comment now and then when we get back to him at a later date he'll discuss the other issues. Does anybody have a... We're not modifying the agenda, we're just changing it to hear one item. Since you want us to vote whether or not we let you leave or you just wanna leave.
I'd like to stay for this part. Unfortunately, I have to leave.
Does anybody object to that? If not, we'll have the county manager's presentation now about some stormwater issues in Eagles Brook subdivision.
Commissioners, you are aware that I've been on site, met with some property owners and some adjacent property owners in this subdivision regarding some drainage issues that have been going on for a long time. The questions that keep coming up is that the amount of water that's being contributed to a 32 or 36 acre basin with the addition of the new development that's occurring right now, essentially two lots and a potential of three, it's only gonna be around 2%, 3%. But unfortunately with the rerouting of the flow, we've got a circumstances where the attenuation, the quantity of water and the rate of water that came down in November and December pointed out we've got some drainage problems there. We've had a home that was flooded, we've had some lots compromised, there've been some work done, you know, to try to ameliorate that with piping and plumbing. It's caused some problems downstream. To make a, bring us up to staff, that's up to the point. We did meet with the property owners and discuss some alternatives, what we can do. They have contracted with an engineer. Chairman and I met with engineer, there were a number of things that he's asked for the county to do. During the first meeting, we had some folks who were willing to put some money up to assist with the project if the county were undertake this project. At this point, where we're at is we've received the engineering and what we've kind of done is done a fire ready aim. We've kind of got things out of sequence. We know that the cost will be about $60,000 distributed over whoever's going to be participating from the engineer. Could be more, could be less. But the first thing that has to occur in any of these projects is we're gonna have to get the property owners' agreement and a permissive use to go there, as well as a modification request from the HOA requesting the board to vacate part of a plat or some modification to the plat to allow the county to do that if this is the board's will. So I'm just trying to get the first step out of the way to make certain if this is the case, then Patrick will go back and address the property owners and we'll certainly address the contractors and see if we can get that request from the HOA and it'll come back to the board in two weeks. We think we can get that out there. That's just the first steps. We kind of got the cart before the horse, so this is the reason why I'm bringing it up under my report today.
This gets the ball started at least towards getting the rights that the county at least look into and also that undisturbed buffer, being able to figure out if we can turn that into a drainage easement and so forth, correct?
Yes, sir, it does. We've just got to get in the right order of things. And right now, we've kind of got the cart before the horses, I like to say.
Then, I know two things would have to occur. You'd probably need a motion to amend the agenda and then a motion just to give you the authorization to get those authorizations. Is that the correct process?
That was the correct.
So I'll make a motion to amend the agenda to allow the county manager to start that process.
We have a motion District 2?
Second.
Second from District 5, any further discussion? I have a lot of discussion, but I'm in favor of this. As y'all well know, we about beat this thing to death and it's a lot of underlying issues that we had to get over, pass that hurdle. We're beyond that hurdle. So I highly recommend that the board consider doing this. So having said that, anybody else have any comments or questions? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Then I'd like to make a motion to actually authorize the county manager to move forward with getting those authorizations to start the process.
Have a motion on the floor. Here's Second District 5, any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so sign, you excused.
Thank you.
Thank you, Board. Let's move down to resolution approving renewal of the listed annual contracts and authorization the purchasing director to execute the renewal agreements for each annual contract.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. If you will, please refer to the attached list for a list of all the existing annual contracts that have been approved by the Board of Commissioners. The attached list indicates the issue date of each annual contract and the remaining available renewals. The request is to approve the renewal of the listed annual contracts and authorize a purchasing director to execute the renewal agreements for the remaining years of each contract pending mutual agreement between the vendor and the county.
I was gonna ask the legal question and council has departed the fix. So I want to make sure that according to our code, the board can authorize the chairman or in the chairman's absence a vice chair to execute any and all documents and agreements. So I want to make sure that we moving in a legal direction. Council signed off on our route sheet, but I want him to say that. Patrick, what the question is, we're in the process of being considered to allow a purchasing director and employee to execute agreements that's been previously approved by the board. And as you well know, our code calls for the chairman or in his absence a vice chair or probably in their absence, they could, the board by vote could appoint somebody to represent to him on signature. So is this, does this, how does this play with our code?
What you're doing today is authorizing a staff member to execute those documents. You always have that power. You always have the power to authorize a staff member to execute a document after you approve the contract.
I got that power?
The board does.
Oh, yeah. I got you. I have that power through the board, okay.
Right, you as a body, as the board. Now, under the, you know, under the new legislation, you have the power to appoint other board members to act in your place, but the board as a body can authorize any other individual at the county to execute.
Okay, having said that, we have a resolution, somebody move. We approve the resolution, it's published. Have a motion District 4. Second District 5, any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Resolution authorized, Chairman to sign an amended contract with Clayton County for one inmate work detail. Six-ten inmates, one van, transportation la di da. And Wade Stroud, good morning again.
Hello Chairman and Commissioners. This is not Bill Murray from Groundhog's Day. On October 20th, the board authorized the chairman to sign a contract with Clayton County for one inmate work detail. This was resolution number 15-328. The contract was sent to Clayton County for approval, but however was returned to the Henry County Department of Transportation with the request to make minor changes, and you can see that in the attached agreement. Upon receiving the request, Henry County DOT thought it would be best to clarify some of the terms in the contract. The changes that were made are as follows. Number one, the term agreement. This agreement will remain in effect for one year with two mutually agreed upon annual extension. Prices will remain firm for the contract period. Then under compensation, the government entity agrees to pay Clayton County $375 per day for four 10-hour days, the cost of boarding inmates and officer's salary, or in the event that Henry County reverts back to five 8-hour days, $300 per day that the details dispatched to work. As most of you know, our DOT field crews work under the four 10-hour day premise and we wanted to make sure the contract reflected the language that in the case we did swap back, the numbers reflected that same dollar value. With that being said, Henry County DOT would like to proceed with the contract with Clayton County and ask that you approve the amended contract in this resolution.
On that background summary, you did read 2015, right?
I did, yes, sir.
So you corrected that when you read it?
Yes.
I'm showing 2016.
It does say 2016.
Got you, you corrected that.
Yes.
Does anybody have any comments or questions? If not, have a resolution, the board authorized the chairman to execute this agreement. Anybody moving that direction? Have a motion from District 1. Second District 5, any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so sign. Thank you. Resolution authorized, Chairman to sign a real estate agreement between Henry County and Georgia Department of Transportation for the Panola Mountain Greenway GDOT.
Thank you, sir. Georgia Department of Transportation sent a request for the county to execute the required real property agreement for the Panola Mountain Greenway Trail, PI number 010721 project. Georgia Department of Transportation requires that the county execute the real property agreement in order for GDOT to approve the right-of-way plans for the project. The real property agreement will show that federal funds are not being used to purchase the necessary right-of-way, but that the right-of-way to be acquired will be acquired in accordance with public law 91-646, the Uniform Act, and that the right-of-way acquisitions will be coordinated with the Georgia Department of Transportation Office of Right-of-Way. Again, this will allow us to move forward with that process and again, federal dollars will not be used in the right-of-way acquisition.
Anybody have any comments, questions? Somebody moving that direction? Have a motion District 5?
Second.
Second District 4, any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, so move. Resolution awarding contract to purchase concrete drainage pipe and head walls.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. Department of Transportation requires reinforced concrete pipe and head walls for various county projects. Having a contract for these items allows quick access to the product without the necessity of bidding each time the product is required and also guarantees prices will remain firm for the contract period. Sealed bids were requested from various concrete pipe items. A bid was conducted through the Purchasing Department and posted on the website to the county, Team Georgia Marketplace, and the ACCG GLGA. Two prospective vendors responded for tear pipe and Precast of Athens was the overall low bid. This will be a unit price contract with no fixed quantities. The price will remain firm for one year with two mutually agreed upon annual renewals. And the purchasing director shall be authorized to execute the renewal agreements as required. DOT will be the primary user, however, the contract will be available to all county departments that require this commodity. Funding is available in the department's budget for the materials as required and needed for projects. We recommend that we award the bid to tear pipe and Precast as the overall low bidder.
Anybody have any comments or questions? Somebody move, we adopt the resolution, it's published. Have a motion District 3?
Second.
Second District 4, any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Resolution approving a budget amendment for the ERP and the Public Safety Project. Skip, good morning.
Commissioner, I have interdup remarks that I've been making all along since this, before Mr. Floyd gets into the presentation. I again want to go over what I've talked to the board about relative to, this is a two-step project. We've got a 2.5 ERP situation and we also have a 2.5 or thereabouts public safety component here. There's hardware and software solutions. This has been funded or been on the back burner for some time now. Today, we're just asking to move this three-year project and roughly about a $5 million investment towards our IT infrastructure. We've got a brief presentation of it, I think you should go through and just kind of get the highlights of it because I know it's big dollars. Please.
You know, having said that, we approved some pipe and it was about 15 pages of pipe and it was under some odd thousand dollars. We approved something, it was about 50,000. Now, we're fixing to approve 5 million, it was three sheets. I just thought I'd throw that.
We're getting better at it.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Board Members. The resolution before you is to seek approval for a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2015-16. But first, I want to just go through, I have five slides, six slides. Of course, this is ERP software and the public safety, two different systems, but both were started in 1998 with really no significant improvements since then. This shows you when we signed the license with HTE in 98 and very little changes in the hardware and the software up until today. And that's the ERP side. Public safety side, same problem. License was signed in 98. Same hardware, same stuff since then. Here's the technology situation. We have aging equipment, low efficiency. Everything about the system is so old and so inefficient that we have to change this. This thing has been going on for many years now, so we're finally gonna try to get up here and approve it. So what I want to read is the whereas on the budget amendment and then see if we have any questions for you guys. The budget needs to be amended periodically to transfer funds in departmentally and enter departmentally in accordance with OCGA 36-81-3. And whereas, the current ERP and public safety programs have been in effect since 1998 and the current system needs to be replaced. We are requesting the board approval, authorizing the budget amendment to fund the ERP and public safety programs in the amount of $5 million.
Do we have any questions, sir? I don't have any questions. I got a comment for you on the floor. I've talked to several, some constitutional officers, some regular elected officials and other places. This is long overdue.
Yes.
Having worked for the FAA for so many years, I know the how antiquated and how quickly back then, probably the same now, that electronic equipment becomes antiquated and outdated.
Yes.
And I think this is, like you indicated, I think it's long overdue. And I think, at best I remember, this is about a three-year, you can't do it overnight because there's too many moving parts, but...
This is a definite, yes, sir, three years out, I suspect.
Three years out, we should be as close to up to date electronically and computer-wise as we could be without any latest innovations in the process.
Correct, yes.
And I know, working with FAA, they would buy something and time they tested it and time they got it on board in four years, you couldn't even get parts for it, so.
It was antiquated for.
We've been very fortunate that we was able to buy Band-Aids to fix it along that. But having said that, you on the floor, anybody'd like to talk? District 4.
I have a statement, actually. Not a question. Just want the citizens to know, we are at the end of our line here with this software. To tell you how old the software that we have currently, large majority of it is DOS-based and green screen.
Yes.
Which if we all remember back many, many years ago, the TRS-80s and the things like that with the green screen and DOS space, so we don't even have Windows on much of our software. So this is something that we have to do. We've reached the point we can't service the software anymore. So it's a lot of money, but we have to do it. Without this, I think we're just gonna basically have to shut the government down.
Correct. And there's a huge public safety component in this.
That's right.
With the new public safety software, the abilities in this new software is just, it's unbelievable.
Yeah, and the citizens probably don't realize, but in our police cars, there are laptops. These laptops are not hooked up to a central program or anything, CAD software, which is, tells the officer where to go. Any kind of GCIC, they actually have to get their own hotspot. So this would actually enable, when we get this fully implemented, for the 911 operator to actually send the location and the call directly to the car, have the officer read it in the car. Also, same thing with fire. Read it in the car, see the situation and respond that much quicker without having, because now everything's done by radio, the same way that we did things in 1970.
Yes.
In the police cars, we're still doing it. And that's call the radio, wait. And how this benefits the citizen, just to let them know, when an officer pulls over somebody and they have to call on the radio, and if there's a lot of traffic, it may take 30 minutes, 15 minutes, 20 minutes to get a response back from dispatch. With this in the car, they can enter the information instantly, have it pulled up on the laptop on their computer, get the officer back on the road, back 10-8, back moving again. And that's really what we want to see. And also, it gives the officer an opportunity to run the tag before they pull somebody over. We don't have that option right now, and so an officer could be pulling over a felon and have no idea until he gets a response back from dispatch. So there's a lot of different elements to this.
A lot, yes.
But we're at the end of our rope and I know it's $5 million, but we don't really have a choice at this point.
We have to do something soon.
Anybody else have any comment? This is long overdue, but the second thing we have to do in conjunction with this is one other thing. We have to use fund balanced capital money to make sure we put roofs on all these places that need it, where we can protect this $5 million project. So keep that in mind, that's, they have to work simultaneous. But having said that, any other comment? There's a resolution in the book for the Henry County Board of Commissioners to approve a budget amendment for the fiscal year 2015-2016. Somebody moving that direction? So move. Have a motion District 4? Second District 1, any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
I wasn't kidding about the roofs, Neil.
I heard it, sir.
You got that?
Yes, sir, did.
Okay. Approval for the minutes, February the 2nd, 2016 is published. Somebody move, we adopt them?
So move.
Have a motion District 1, Second District 4, any further discussion? None. In favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign. Chairman has no comments. Any commissioner like to make a comment this time for any reason? I start with District 4.
I think we've been here long enough, Chairman.
District 1? No, I'm good. District 3? District 5? Okay, we're gonna move along. County manager, I understand we've already resolved one of your concerns, so...
I have a couple of more, I'll be very brief. Staff is about knee-deep to thigh-deep in our budget right now. We've got a long way to go. If we were to look at the listed budgets, we brought $170 million and obviously we know that some of that's front-end loaded. We've got a lot of work, once we get everything loaded in, we'll be going back through the departments and trying to true this thing up. We yesterday had a good day, Henry County day and crossover day up at the Capitol. Want to thank the chamber, Mr. Gill, for having us aboard. It was my first one, so I don't have a lot of things to compare it to in Georgia. It's certainly different than the Florida experience I had, but I did get to shake the governor's hand twice, so I feel like I'm up on the, I feel like my stock has moved up a little bit. Public safety meeting today, we're having a summit with fire, EMS, police department and sheriff's office and 911, starting at 2:00. We may push that a little bit just so we can get something to eat and every while it won't be grumpy in there. I received some communication last week and the storms blew through. We lost our hockey rink in a McDonald's and I've got some phone calls I need to make, but on the 24th, we had a lot more wind up here and I'm surprised we hadn't had some other signage as they indicated. But we've got some homework to do. We've got a lot of people who look at that youth program as important, so I'll be talking to y'all through the week about what we may be able to do, be able to assist to get that up and running again. My last comment, we've got the active shooters tabletop on 8:30, I'm sorry, at 8:30 on 3816. If y'all could drop in, please go ahead and come in. This is our tabletop. This is the exercise where we're trying to see in a experimental forum, the tabletop, what our actual exercise is gonna look like. So to be at the Emergency Management Center, you get a chance that morning to drop by. I think you're gonna be impressed with what we're attempting to do and why we're going about it. Our active, I mean our actual exercise, again, is on the April 12th. With that, that's all I have unless the board has anything for me.
Anybody have any questions or comment? County attorney, you have anything need to be discussed in public session?
No, Mr. Chairman.
There are coming meetings and events, March of 15th at 6:30 PM is a regular meeting, April of 5th at 9:00 AM is a regular meeting. And Commissioner Preston indicated that spring break is sometime. Is that the second meeting in?
It's the week of April, April 2nd meeting.
April what?
April 5. It's the week of April 5th.
So, okay, that's what I thought he said. So does anybody want to, no good deed goes unpunished now. We paying the price today because we missed a meeting, so does anybody want to consider being off that day and cancel the meeting and doubling up? If you do, raise your hand. If not, we're gonna move on. We're moving on. Next, we have executive session. I understand we got some litigation, pending litigation maybe, and we got several right-of-way acquisitions, condemnations, is that?
And one personnel issue.
One personnel. Okay, so somebody needs to move to adjourn executive session in accordance with the law and advice of the county attorney, and we're gonna hit all three of them. We're gonna talk about acquisition of federal real estate. So we're gonna...
So move.
Sir?
Second answer.
You have a motion? Okay, we have a motion, acquisition of real estate pending and our potential litigation and personnel matters. Somebody moving that, have a second? Have a motion from District 1, Second District 4, any further discussion? In favor, raise your right hand. All opposed, same sign, so move. We are now moving into the executive session.